All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our special board meeting for August 11th. We'll begin with roll call. Mr. Iskiesian.
Dr. Shively. Dr. Beckpulley.
Here.
Dr. White.
Here.
Mr. Ashutti.
Here.
Mrs. Levy.
Here.
Mr. Fashionetto.
Here.
Mr. Lozey. Not yet. Mrs. Schenkel. Mrs. Patrick.
Here.
We have a quorum seven members present.
All right. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silent meditation. Thank you. Next up is courtesy of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items only? Seeing none, then we'll move on. We have no minutes to approve. We have not met since our last meeting in June, so nothing to report there. Dr. Silva, any update?
Just welcome back. We had a break during the summertime. You'll see that today's board agenda and then following that are.
All right. We have a motion and a second for 701 and 702. So, Mr. Iskiesian, if you could pull the board on those two items.
Dr. Shively.
Yes.
Dr. Beckpulley.
Yes.
Dr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Ashutti.
Yes.
Mrs. Levy.
Yes.
Mr. Fashionetto.
Yes.
Mrs. Schenkel.
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right. No nuance ladies. Try it again. A little better. I can just whisper. Courtesy of the floor, Mr. Antalics.
Stephen Antalics, 77 Ridge. In case anyone has a problem with my parking and the 10 minute spot for taxpayers, I reserve the privilege to apply Einstein's theorem relativity. And if I apply that, what that means is that a 10 minute span can be adjusted to the limits of relativity, which means it begins when I park and ends when I leave. So if you have a problem, take over as Einstein.
Thank you, Mr. Antalics. I take pride in getting the 10 minutes put on that sign because I used to park there all the time because I, like you, am a taxpayer and it said taxpayer parking. So our previous CFO changed it to 10 minutes because I used to park there all the time. Anything for open forum? Seeing none. Think that sounds a little better. Motion to adjourn. This is Patrick. Second, Dr. White. All in favor? We are adjourned and we're going to roll right into our combined committee meetings for tonight. First up on the agenda is courtesy of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, we will move right on and we'll have one at the end. First thing we have tonight is Scott Shears here from PFM to give us an update on our debt service review. Scott, thank you.
Everyone can hear me okay? Perfect. All right. Well, it took us about 15 years, but we're finally here to talk about the last interest rate swap and the last variable rate vehicle. So we have the handout up on the screen. I'm going to not go through the whole presentation, but just to kind of back up a little bit. So I guess we had met with the authority in January, just for a brief review of the financial situation and the transaction that we were going to contemplate here this summer. We then met with the authority again in June to kind of go over it again, brief them, kind of lay out the plan, potential timeline, options we're considering. Shortly after that meeting, we then sent out an RFP so that we could come back to you tonight and then also to the authority later this month with the results of the RFP. And again, basically similar to last year when we went through the options. The choices with this variable rate transaction, the 2021 CDs, is we can terminate the swap, pay a termination amount and refund those underlying variable rate bonds with a fixed rate bond issue, traditional fixed rate bond issue. If we do that, then the district will have a very traditional portfolio. A hundred percent of it will be a very traditional debt portfolio. So we got RFPs back for what that bond issue would look like from the various underwriters. The other RFP that we sent out was for the option where we do not terminate the swap. We leave the swap outstanding, so it's still associated with variable rate bonds. But we basically replace the existing variable rate bonds with new variable rate bonds or variable rate note in this case. And so we got those proposals back. We got about five or so responses from, for the fixed rate bond issue option, and we got a handful of options for the variable rate market as well. So that's basically the highlight for this evening is to go through those two different paths that we went down so that we could come back and give you live information. And so if we go to page three, which is the debt summary, a lot of stuff on here, but we always like to include this. But just to show you sort of how this transaction fits in with the overall debt portfolio. If you look at the top, basically columns one through 12, that is your debt service that you pay on a fiscal year basis. So column two starts with the 2015 B notes and then all the way over to column 12 is the 2025 A bonds. And then column 11, they're highlighted in the yellow, is the transaction that we're talking about this evening, which is the underlying variable rate bonds with the swap attached to it. Now again, keep in mind the past couple of years since we've done the 2021 C bonds, I would say it worked exactly as we expected, came in right on budget, sort of no issues. We've worked over the years to get it to be a very efficient transaction, but we're kind of running out of daylight now with that. And we had to do something here by this November, which is kind of why we're, why we're at the table. But again, you can just sort of see how this fits in. Overall, if you go all the way down to the bottom of column 11 and kind of even then go down to the bottom of column 23, there's about 30 million of principal outstanding on the 2021 C bonds. And if you just go to the right there at the bottom of column 24, out of a total of about 204 million of total debt. So we're talking about a pretty big piece of the district's debt portfolio. The good news I would say is this is a relatively short transaction. So when we started this process 15 years ago, this debt was 15 years longer. So it's hard to believe how much it amortized over that time and kind of performed as, as expected. So again, let's just give you a quick overview of how this one fits within. And whether we do a, the option where we don't terminate and we do a new variable rate loan, or we do terminate and do a new fixed rate bond issue, the goal is to basically match the amortization. So right now, column 11, it ends in the 31, 32 fiscal year. The goal would be to keep it in that same fiscal year. So we really would not change the structure. You know, like sometimes when you refinance a mortgage, you might go from 20 years outstanding to then refinance it back out to 30. This is keeping the same, same payback structure. Either, either option we'd be looking at would be the same payment structure. Page four, we've kind of hit on this over, over the years. I already mentioned a couple of the key points up at the top and number one, that overall you have about 204 million principal outstanding, 174 million is traditional fixed rate debt, about 30 million is what we're talking about here. And so about 85% of your portfolio right now is traditional fixed rate debt and a little under 15% is this variable rate transaction with the swap. And then the rest of this page just kind of goes into some of the details of the swap. Maybe if we go to the top of page five, just to kind of re-acclimate ourselves to the way this works is currently, right now, the school district authority is in the top left-hand corner in the blue box. The authority basically pays the debt service, which is a variable rate debt service to the 2021 C bondholders, and it's based off of variable rate index known as SOFR. The district receives in that red dotted line from JP Morgan, which is the counterpart party, variable rate as well. It's not quite the same variable rate. It's still 67% of SOFR, but it's not 67% of SOFR plus 35. But the indices match each other. And then also in return, then the district is paying the swap counterparty, the fixed swap rate of a 3.84, which all that said, in that tan box to the right there, the overall budgeted rate is about a 4.19%. So when you kind of cancel out the different arrows and what's left paying, when you go through kind of all the details behind the scenes, that's basically what the school district is paying. So then down at the bottom of page five are the two main options that we already talked about here in the opening. Option one in the blue is we do a new variable rate deal. We do not terminate the swap. Option two in the yellow is where we terminate the swap and refund it with the fixed rate bond issue. If we go to page six, we already kind of talked about number six and seven, but if we look at the timeline, this evening, just kind of here for an update, August 20th, I believe, is the authority meeting where we would look to have a resolution approved by the authority with one of the options. And then August 25th is your next school board meeting where your bond council will be preparing the necessary resolution to move forward as well. And then we price the bond sometime the second half of September after we go through credit rating process. If that's the option we choose, which we'll get into more and, you know, put all the offering documents together to be ready to enter the market at that point. And then close sometime in October, which is prior to the November 1 mandatory date that we have to do something by. Page seven, lots of stuff on here and lots of different colors. This is a summary of the fixed rate bond issue proposals that we received. The short summary of all this, obviously, we sent it to, we actually sent it to six different firms. We got five responses back. When we compare the estimated interest rates that they proposed and their various fees related to the transaction, over in column four, Raymond James submitted the best overall proposal. District has some experience with Raymond James on the last transactions. They also won that RFP for the transaction last year as well. They, they did a good job with that transaction. They do perform well. They understand also the credit of the school district and they do a lot of school district transactions. So long story short on this page, if we do proceed with that option, our recommendation would be to move forward with Raymond James as the underwriter on that transaction, again, based on all the different items that they submitted along with the other firms as well. On page eight, again, more of this is just kind of a lead behind. But this is a summary of the variable rate options that we received from First National Bank. Raymond James also submitted a proposal for that and Wells Fargo. Of those, we spent some time talking with your business administration about the Wells Fargo proposal. Of all those, that one had the sort of the nicest features, I guess, if you will. Had the best overall rates and one of the nice things they offered, an option that would take us all the way through maturity of that transaction out through 2031, 32 fiscal year, which means we would not need to do something in two years or three years like we've been kind of having to do in the past. or three years like we've been kind of having to do in the past. However, with all that said, although it was a decent proposal, the math that you'll see points to the fixed rate bond issue where you terminate the swap to be the more overall efficient transaction. And that's highlighted on page nine. So if we start up in the top there in box number one, so again, we're refunding the 2021 C floating rate note, terminating the swap. We'd be issuing traditional fixed rate bonds. So again, the district then would have a very traditional debt portfolio, be issuing just a little under 30 million of, of bonds, assuming today's interest rate. The swap termination, just if you had to terminate today, just write a check out, it'd be $2.2 million for that swap termination. However, the thing that we need to look at, we need to look at the whole overall package where we pay the termination amount, but then we're also refinancing those underlying variable rate bonds with new fixed rate bonds at a very low interest rate as well. So when you factor in swap termination, getting rid of that swap counterparty, getting rid of the swap, issuing the new bonds at the lower rate, the, I'll call it the future value cost, so to cost, is about a little over a million dollars, about a million 50,000. The present value cost, which is typically the way we look at either refinancing or these kind of restructurings, it's about an $886,000 cost. And then you see in column six, how that cost is absorbed by the district debt service. Basically, the debt service would increase, it'd be basically the same for the 25, 26 fiscal year, but then every year thereafter for the next six years, it'd be about 185,000, give or take, more of interest, basically of debt service impact. So to do that whole transaction with Raymond James indicative rates, it'd be a present value cost of again, about $886,000. If we move forward on, go to next page, page 10, with the Wells Fargo proposal. So now up at the top in box one, we're refunding the 2021 Cs with this Wells Fargo option, swap remains in place, issuing these variable rate bonds. The floating rate would stay in place until maturity, so we would not need to do anything else with it. Issuing about $30 million or so of debt for it. And the local effort cost is about $1.4 million. The present value of that would be, you know, probably about 1.25 somewhere, not ballpark for some reason, didn't print out on there. So from a present value cost standpoint, the fixed rate bond issue is the better of the two options. We just, we haven't really seen good, real good variable rate. What, what the district received in 2021, the market was very good for those variable rate financing instruments. And it's basically since then, we just haven't seen them nearly as aggressive as they were. So to us, it, it kind of makes sense to now terminate the swap. Again, it's the cheaper of the, the two options, the least costly. It will also basically eliminate the need for the authority going forward. As sad as that is to see, since we've been working with the authority for 15 years, there'll be some cost savings with that, no more audits and no more of the annual swap valuations, things like that. No more board meeting for the swaps, so you get a night off, Harry and a few others. So that would basically be our recommendation to move forward with, with that option. And the last page is again, just a timeline, but we already went over sort of a high level. So that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. Try to boil down to kind of the summary format of what we did and what our recommendation is. But Harry, I don't know if you have anything to add or happy to answer any questions that the board has.
It comes down to to be able to, to down under that swap, replace everything in a fixed rate portfolio. The basic cost would be over seven years, about $1 million, which would add about $185,000 a year to our annual debt service cost.
Correct, that's correct. And again, that will fluctuate a little bit between now and the time we price the bonds. And, but we'll keep your business office up to date if things get better, things get worse and if things change, similar to what happened before, you know, we'll come back and talk to you and see what the options are at that point, but we don't expect any major changes. But if we do see anything, we'll keep you posted. Thought I saw another, yes.
Yeah, just, so what would be the advantage of, of keeping some swaps? Because, or the, the variable weight rate swaps? Because it just seems we were counting on them being more aggressive, is that just really what it boils down to?
What would be the advantage of maintaining some variable rate debt? So I, I am actually an advocate of variable rate debt. However, this variable rate debt is hedged with fixed rate debt. So having kind of pure variable rate debt outstanding, it does make sense in certain instances. I would say just given the past of Bethlehem area school district and some of the issues related to the swaps and the variable rate debt, I personally think it would be great to be able to just kind of wash our hands of it and just have a very traditional fixed rate debt portfolio. And if in the future, you know, it makes sense to do maybe just some, what we call unhedged variable rate debt, you know, we'll, we'll come back to you. There's some other districts in the Lehigh Valley that have just pure underlying variable rate debt, no swap attached to it. And there are, like I said, there are some benefits to it, meaning if the Fed would start to reduce interest rates, which that is the expectation, not, probably not a lot, but maybe a little bit, that those variable rate, that variable rate debt should come down a little bit as well. So the thinking there is to have your variable rate debt kind of match your, I'll, I'll call it your liquid fund balance, if you will. Because when the Fed starts to reduce rates, your fund balance, your interest earnings and the fund balance will start to go down as well. So kind of having that prudent match, it is, there, there are some benefits to it. However, this one is not unhedged, this one is hedged, so that's where our recommendation, just get, get, get rid of it. Any other thoughts or questions?
Yes, Dr. White?
If this is too complicated to answer, you can direct me to a place to read up more and learn more. I'm wondering about the federal chaos that we're kind of, you know, we really, it's hard to do any forecasting of merit. And I'm just wondering if, you know, that we're making all those decisions before the midterm election. And we have, in the bigger picture of scope, we're just talking about our debt portfolio. But it's the relationship of how we manage that debt portfolio with the annual budget on a year-to-year basis. How, how are we doing? I mean, with the fixed rate, at least we have something consistent.
Agreed.
So because the other part is, is going to be so challenging.
Yep.
Is that another picture for going in this way?
I, I think it is, yeah, I think having a consistency and having the debt basically certain now, the only way your debt would change in the future is if you'd either refinance it and you'd have to go through board approval to do it, or you add new debt for new projects, which, you know, district obviously is contemplating that. So I think having, so some of our boards just like having that peace of mind, they can sleep good at night knowing that debt is set in stone, it's not going to change, it's going to be at a good rate. And that's a constant that they can kind of bank on going forward amid all the other chaos that's out there. There's other variables and everything else going on, but at least your debt portfolio is, is constant, you don't necessarily have to, have to worry about that. Yep, that's a good point.
All right.
Yeah, well, I would just add, heading into a lot of the uncertainty, having predictability is a huge value. And in this case, when you compare just purely dollar for dollar, it's about 60,000 or 70,000 more expensive to go with the variable option. And that could change, at least with the fixed rate, we know exactly what we're going to get, when we're going to get and how much we're going to get. So I would definitely recommend the fixed rate option.
Other questions? All right, thank you Scott.
Very good, thank you.
Excellent.
Appreciate your time.
So just to kind of wrap this up, we are going to have a resolution put forth at the next board meeting. I don't know if you guys want debt council, bond council to be present or not, but we will vet that with PFM, bring that forward and we can expect that as an agenda item with the fixed rate option on the bonds.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, next up is Board Policy 113.4. This is dealing with confidentiality of special education records. Dr. Burris or Mrs. Rusnak or both?
This policy is part of the corrective action from the CMCI audit from PDE. It was reviewed by Christine Roderick from King Spry. So it is now required that we have one, so this would be the first reading.
Yep, and this is a brand new policy.
Yes, brand new.
All right. Pretty straightforward questions on this? Not, we'll see it two more times and approve in September. All right, next one is an amendment to the STS agreement.
Yes, we are adding an agreement for, or an item for Claire Hogan in order to come back and do some consulting for us. So you'll see that it's $80 per hour.
All right. Questions on that? Keep her as long as we can. All right, next up, Mr. Aristocazian, you have a budget update?
Just a brief update, last time we met, we were passing our own budget and looking forward to the state budget on June 30th. Since then, we don't really have any additional answers. So hoping to get some results sooner than later. The immediate impact on, on the budget impasse, if you will, is more or less on our cash flow. Had everything been going as, as predicted, we would have about $30 million of revenue in our bank accounts now, help and offset some of the expenses and, and really padding the interest earnings, which we rely on to balance the budget. Given the impasse, the biggest impact right now is, is just cash flow. So about $30 million not coming our way, that's just for July and August. The longer this continues, the more impactful it'll be. The good news is we put some strategies in place and we have a pretty healthy tax base. So thank you for all the taxpayers that made the payments on time to allow us to continue to roll as we move forward. On the horizon, Dr. White, you mentioned some of the federal uncertainty, if you will. You know, we, we started off the year with a funding freeze. Since then, that money's been unlocked and hopefully will start flowing our way. But if you start reading the newspaper articles, there's talks about clawbacks and some existing funding may be going back. Yet more uncertainty that throws in the world that we're trying to manage in addition to the state uncertainty we typically manage. So those clawbacks are something we're keeping a pretty close eye on. And if you look at the federal skinny budget, which is the president's proposed budget, if you will, it'll likely change through this process, you'll see the biggest impact is again impacting education. There's about $200 million in cuts primarily focused on English learners and migrant students. That means that even the title money that we usually budget for is flat, is likely going to be reduced. So even at a 1% of the 200 million that comes our way, which is just a really gross estimate, you're looking at a $2 million, even at a half percent of the additional million. So starting off next year, based on what's proposed at least, we can expect to see more uncertainty and at least a, you know, one or two percent cut, which means we're going to lose potentially one or $2 million in the process, that just puts us in a pretty big hole to start the year off.
The question that I had about federal dollars having matching funds. A matching fund partner that had been aligned with the title funding that we're losing. Is there potential for, I, I mean, I don't know what matches. Is it our own budget that matches it? Is it our own bank accounts or other grantors or foundations? So I'm just wondering about the matching funds, if they're going to go away if the federal dollars go down? Or if there's another way to, to negotiate a better balance of the matching dollar?
It's a good question. I can't say I have a answer for you at this point in time. But we're, and I'll explore all of our options just to see what we can get to offset the loss.
I want to thank Mr. Aristocazian and the other members of the executive cabinet. You've heard on the news lately in terms of the business environment that uncertainty has an economic cost. Well, uncertainty has an educational cost too. As especially those services for some of our most vulnerable children. Title III is for English language learners. When, when funds are clawed back, frozen, reassigned, the district just doesn't sit around. We try to figure out where we can, since we have to meet those required services, where will we find the resources in the remainder of the budget? And then after a little bit of work, a little bit of tough decision-making, the funds are restored. So that's not good use of a CFO's or, or a school district's time during this, during this time of budget uncertainty, especially when you add to it the state of Pennsylvania's inability to get a budget together. So I've never seen a, a budget season like this one with a degree of instability from two different levels of, of sources. I'm thank, very, very thankful that at least the primary source, local revenues is established and, and has been able to help us through this, this difficult spot. But like Harry said, I think we're going to see this again next year.
Other questions on that? Dr. Beckpulley?
Just a, a quick clarification on the delay from the state. And, and then this delay, you know, money is flowing again, but might not have reached our coffers. There are some districts who, when it comes to cash flow, cash on hand needing to meet payroll, are contemplating taking out loans to make those payments until some of this other money opens up. It sounds like that is not a situation for us, which is an incredibly fortunate position to be in because speaking of economic costs, those kinds of loans come with significant costs to do nothing but pay back loans that shouldn't have been taken, you know, shouldn't have been necessary in the first place. But are, is there a kind of time horizon or is there, hopefully it will not get that ridiculous, but is there a moment at which you start to worry about that?
Well, we could always look for a trend, but that's before January. Our, our initial timeline is if we can get to October, we should be okay. Anything after October, we really need to look at other options that are out there and available. You know, we're, we're somewhat fortunate, we have fairly healthy, although committed, fund balance that we're leveraging right now. Our biggest act was the taxpayers, the local revenue is a big chunk of what we take in. Because of the local revenue, we can continue to operate without a contingency plan. But come October, we will start working on a contingency plan.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Aristocazian. More to come on the budget. That'll take us, we have a pretty long list of agenda items, many of them are routine items, so we'll go fairly quickly, please stop me if I'm going too fast. And Dr. Lee, if you want to jump in on any curriculum items, please let me know. But first two, we have our annual items for facilities, dealing with our bus service for the year. The first is the schedule and the second is the approval of the vehicles and the operators. That's 4.01 and 4.02, that's an annual item. 4.03 and 4 both have to do with Fountain Hill. The first one is a change order on the waste characterization for removal from Fountain Hill Elementary School now that the demolition or the project is underway. I don't know if we have anything to add on that, it's pretty self-explanatory in the item. 4.04 is the moving services to take all the old Fountain Hill stuff, all the teacher stuff over to the temporary location, that's 4.04. 4.05 is a pretty routine item, selling some obsolete vehicles, buses, vans, work trucks, those types of things. 4.07 and 4.08 are two agreements with Pinebrook Family Answers. The first one is their re-engagement services at our two high schools, counseling students coming back in. And the second one is for social work services within the school district. Those are also pretty routine items. 4.09 is the Lehigh Valley Hospital Provider Services Agreement through LVHN, providing physician services in schools. 4.10 is a change order to an agreement that we had for extra help in our school psychologist department with evaluations. Some were credited by mistake to the previous school year, they got thrown into last school year. Therefore, there's a small change order of that, but those are paid through access funds. And they were services rendered. The next two are annual agreements, the Schoology renewal as well as the GALE subscription renewal. Both of those are annual items. 4.13 and 4.14 are some opportunities through Touchstone Theater. The first one is a building bridges program, working with our special education students at some elementary schools. I believe this is a new program, I don't remember, newer. And then the second one, 4.14 is the Young Playwrights Program that we've had for years with much success. That's 13 and 14. 4.15 is a MOU for the American Institutes for Research. And you can see they're doing some work with seventh grade students in our district. 4.16 is an RFP for math contracted services for some professional development opportunities across the district as well. And you can see the different, the different cost amounts there and the different programs that are being offered. 4.17 is the Annual Freedom and Liberty Plans for Targeted School Improvement. 4.18 is the Brockle Comprehensive School Improvement Plan that we've seen several years in a row now. 4.18 is the Brokaw Comprehensive School Improvement Plan that we've seen several years in a row now. 4.19 is targeted support for our other three middle schools, Nitsman, Northeast and East Hills. 4.20 is the very exciting automotive part bits for our vehicles. 4.21 is fall athletics purchasing. And you see the vendors there. 4.22 is a service agreement with the IU for a variety of services for the upcoming school year. And you can see the cost for each one on the agenda item there. And again, that's annual business that we do with the IU. 4.23 are some tax exonerations for three parcels, you see them listed down there. Bacon parcels, we own them, they're currently used for farmland, rented out to the Kohler Farm. So we're exonerating ourselves from our taxes. And the factory, excuse, sorry, thank you for that, that's the third one, is the the factory property on South Bethlehem that is still owned by us, not transferred to VOTAC at the moment. So we have the taxes on that. Then we have several partnership agreements with various universities. We have Duke, we have Eastern, University of New England, Cedar Crest College, Lenore Rhine. All affiliations there, so we can take on their student teachers in various parts of the district, various programs. 4.30 is the annual licensing fee for PA ETEP, our evaluation system for professional staff. 4.31 is that an amendment to the STS agreement? 4.32 is our Kellen Foundation invoice for our healthy eating and healthy food programs that have been in the district for many years, both staff and students. And 4.33 are some tuition waiver students. And you see the number of days that they are, we are waiving tuition. Typically, those are students in their senior year who have moved out or are moving in and want to start or end the year with us. And you see the the various lists there. All right, that's a lot, that's 33 items, most of which are routine business. Any questions? Dr. Lee and Dr. Silva, anything you want to add to any of those?
No.
Okay. All right. So you will see all those on the agenda for August 25. Up to courtesy of the floor, Mr. Antalics, come on up.
Stephen Antalics again. The PIAA Independent Organization and it involves extracurricular activities, sports. And the driving force behind the PIAA is competition. Brokaw plays Nitsman in football, but that's not under PIAA. So there's the competition there. So I think, consider this. Dealing with mandated learn mandates of the state in terms of learning, instead of the PIAA, the M, the BIAA, which be the Bethlehem Interscholastic Academic Association. And in that, introduce competition. Now you have it in football. So take for example, take the worst middle school reading score and the best middle school reading score. And someone outside of the school asks the children, given the facts, why are you the worst? Fair question. And have a form there which they can fill out and that's signed and turned back. Because the person most concerned with the scores are your least source of information. This makes sense. So you go to the source of the problem, which you're not doing now. So once they realize they're the worst and ask them, what do you, what do we want and what do you need to do to get better, to be the best? That'll inspire the kids like it does in football. But it's not happening, I don't think it's happening, so. I think this demands thinking outside the box. So that could be a very motivating factor because it'll feed into the need to be good, better, which is inherent to these kids. It's inherent. You can tap into that and you know, you don't know what will happen. Those reading scores could go through the roof if they're motivated. Once you find out why they're not good in reading and have the kids tell you why. Because they are the source of the problem. And they are your solution. And they're untouched. So I would get as very, very serious thought. The BIAA.
Thank you, Mr. Antalics. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? None, open forum. Dr. White?
I want to applaud the administration for the advanced social media campaign on focusing on why we are introducing the electronic device policy. And it's it's been a really good forward thinking to to not talk about what's restriction, but the whole purpose of focused learning. And with every post that I've been following along, what's been hysterical is just seeing the comments, the negative comments, which means they haven't read the policy and they really haven't focused a lot of attention on it. So it's going to, it's, this is a change and it's changing all our behaviors. But I will say on a personal note, this summer, I was really paying attention to the time that I was putting into my own device. And it's shocking, it's shocking what we've all become used to. So it's not just for the students, I think it's for all of us to really be more present in in our work and in our relationships. So thank you for for doing the work.
All right. Thank you, Dr. White. Anything else? This is Patrick.
I'm going to piggyback on that. I I know a lot of time and effort has gone into that. Is there going to be something coming out that is going to tell parents exactly what the expectation is? Okay, personally, I would love to see a video if if possible of, okay, your kid comes into school, this is exactly what's supposed to happen, whether it's, it stays in in the backpack, it stays in the locker or all of that. I I was getting a little frustrated actually with with some of the videos because I think we all know the why. We all know the why, 90% of the people in this room are addicted to their phone, addicted to social media. I know if I leave my house without my phone, I feel like I'm going to die and I have to run back in the house. It's it's bad and it's a total time suck. So I I think we all know that. And I I think the school district, we make a lot of decisions. We made a great decision about clear bags at the stadium. And we didn't give a whole bunch of why, it was like, this is our policy, this is how it's going to be rolled out. Period. And I think we need to be very firm with this, that your kid comes into school, this stays in your kid's backpack, they can get it out at lunchtime when they're in high school, they can get it out at the end of the day when they're in elementary school, period. No more discussion, this is our policy.
Other questions, other comments? All right, we have exec session following student discipline and personnel. We're back on Monday, August 25, no meeting next week, August 25 at East Hills. So we are adjourned.